It's been like, I thought we started earlier than we usually do. We just haven't been able to get to that because of the basketball last night. So, but I think the girls in Cheneau made a play off. You gotta continue with that now. So, it's not gonna be long. It's not gonna be long. Yeah, I suppose.
Hello, I'd like to call to order the February 8th committee meeting of the L S D school board's order. We go right to the visitors today?
Wherever you wanna go.
We're gonna start off by addressing the visitors. You can state your name for us, please, while you're here.
Karen V. Garrel, and I have a question concerning the lunch program.
Okay.
Can I go ahead with it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. If a child comes through the lunch line, and as they get their food and they come to the end, if the parent is, if the lunch payments are delinquent, what is the policy? Do you wanna address that?
We have a policy where if a child gets too far delinquent, that the meal is taken off of them at the high school. That's part of the policy, and that it's disposed of in the back in the kitchen. They can't resell that, they can't put it back in the food line because it's already been brought out to the cashier. So, at the elementary school, they're given a different kind of a lunch than the bought lunch that's there. So, and then, they are given notices in the elementary, they're given handwritten notes that they're delinquent. The high school, they're told, you know, hey, you've got a negative balance, you might be $2, $3, $4. And once they hit that number, that's $6.75, which is part of the policy, then they're not allowed to buy lunch at the high school. So...
And we call home. How, okay, I see. How can that, now, is our food lunch program also subsidized partly by the federal government?
Sure.
Then how can that be done with disposing of the food when we're getting, we're also getting funding from the government to help?
Once they take it and they bring it out to that cashier, they can't, because they don't know what's been happening to that food, so they can't be put back into the line. You know, that's just, or that's the law.
That's not what I mean.
Oh.
How can it be, when we are getting subsidized money from the government to help pay for these meals, that the meal, even though the parents are delinquent, how can it be without some type of repercussion on us as a school district that that food be taken away from the child and disposed of?
Well, there are students that are on free, there are students that are on reduced, and there are students that are on full pay. So, students that are on free get free lunch, and they get, or they get reduced. So, I mean, that's, that's, that's the money that we get back from the federal government. You know, that's on those purchased meals and also on, so if they're delinquent, it doesn't count as anything. They didn't purchase a meal.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, I'm Raula Marshall, and I wanna elaborate on what Karen was saying, because this has been coming up for discussion for the last two months in kitchen cabinet meetings, because of certain instances that were brought to our attention that may or may not have happened in the cafeteria with students that have gone through the line at the high school level, and not, and the parents are delinquent. It was our opinion that if the student is of legal age, 18 or older, then perhaps that student should be responsible for his lunch money. However, if that student is not at legal age and under 18, there should be a differentiation between an elementary student and a high school student getting nutrition. Statistics show, and you're all educators, and I'm sure you are aware of the statistics, that students study better and pay attention better when their blood sugar levels are at the right level, and everything's running right with them physically. So, that's our question. It shouldn't, in our opinion, be the student's responsibility for their parent to be paying on time, because that child is dependent legally on that parent until they're 18 years old. So, that's where our line seems to be blurred into the school's policy as to, Karen, we can somewhat understand the idea of the food, once it's been touched, have to be taken away. However, we've also brought to Ms. Petrelli's attention, she's, I understand, looking into this, there are national programs that the food that's being disposed by schools is being redistributed among other people in need. So, even though we're saying that that food is maybe contaminated or not, and that's why it's going into the trash or in the back, there are programs in place that takes that same food and does give it to other people. So, see, there's a great area as to how this is, but it is very unfortunate that any student goes through, not being fed that day, even if he's fed at a protein bar. Maybe they can't get that much. Whatever's happening at the elementary level to me should be required to us, should be afforded across the board, that no student in Melwood City should be going hungry for any reason that is under legal age, no student. And that's where, that's the point that we actually have been trying to address. Thank you.
Thank you. Should we look at the other members? Okay. Next visitor, go ahead.
Leona Otavio, I'm just here with the cabinet.
Okay.
Sean Rele, I'm the local auditor.
Hi, I'm Linda Barrett, I know a lot of you here. Here tonight, more only as a parent of five children, two that have graduated, two graduating this year in one junior high level, but as a representative for the L S D softball boosters. I'm currently the president, I have been president before in the past, and there are some concerns and issues from multiple parents that I feel I need to address to the board to see how to respond without saying the most, you know, incorrect information. I wanna come straight to you guys, so that I can pass it along to the parents without any in-between hearsay.
Is this something that we need to, is this a personnel issue that we need to discuss?
Um, yeah, there's a couple things regarding JV team, regarding some player situations, some personnel, or is it gonna stay and go, do we have a chance to have a position up? There's multiple things that have come across my plate more often than not in the last month or so.
Okay, will you be able to wait till we go into executive session so that we can hear you then?
Absolutely.
Okay, and we'll hear about it then. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Amy Agustinelli, and I'm just here to support Linda, and I could say as well.
Okay.
Cheryl Metler, and I'm a softball booster also.
Okay, thank you. And we're gonna go to the principal's boards now.
We'll start with Mr. Solich, Mr. Laiton, not making today.
Okay. I have the shorter, wider version of Mr. Laiton. I'll try to... Just topics for this evening. Wednesday, February 3rd, the drug dogs were brought through. We searched the lockers, locker rooms, absolutely nothing was found. When I was on the third floor with a dog actually hit on a tuna sandwich. So, not typical, but we did, we do plant drugs for the dogs to find, and out of the four animals that we had in here, when we planted it on the first floor, all four dogs did key in on and find the target. So, they were definitely in tune and doing what they needed to do. Also, Wednesday, February 3rd, we had our annual freshman orientation for current eighth grade parents. We discussed scheduling and what they could expect for their students as they go through their high school years. And that brings us to that we've begun the scheduling process, we've started course requests, they're actually due tomorrow. When it begins, we input that into the computers later on this week and go through the processes. We also have applicants that are starting to roll in for the STEM position. Currently, as I last checked, P educator, we had seven applicants online that all have the correct certification. Two applicants that walked in, and I had one that made a phone call to us today. So, that process is going forward also, and I'll start pulling those down around February 12th, actually. So, that's what we have at the high school right now.
A question for you, how was the freshman orientation, or whatever you call it, that, how was that communicated to parents?
I believe Mr. Laiton put out an all call.
Or several.
Yeah, multiple all calls that go through the district.
Some parents I doubt missed it.
Oh, really? I'll have to relay that information to him.
I didn't get a real call, and I...
Yeah, that's typically how we send that information out.
Okay.
I'll make sure he makes note of that.
All right, thanks.
We don't have a projected date for interviews?
Not at this, I'm still trying to pull those down, so, once that closes. I've been very impressed with the applicants we've received so far, and I'm very impressed that they all have the correct certification, not running into the same issues we had at the elementary level. So, that's kinda showing the sign of the times in terms of what certifications are coming out, so, let's go ahead.
I have a question for you.
Yes.
Is senior privilege still part of the scheduling option for next year for seniors as well?
I don't believe there's been any changes currently, unless directed from the school board, in terms of senior privilege. I have some information on that if you'd like to discuss it at any point.
Okay. Thank you. Want to discuss it now, since it's going up?
I was just curious, how many students took advantage of it this year?
Tell it, wait a second here. We had eleven late arrivals that are considered coming late to the school day, that took advantage of that, and we had forty-eight early release commitments. Forty-four leave after sixth period, four more leave after eighth period, period seven is their lunch. So, that's what we have on the books in terms of how many students took advantage of it.
And how many students are in the senior class this year?
I believe we're right in around 125.
So, we have fifty-nine and out of 125 take advantage of it.
Correct.
The early dismissal, you said somewhere before sixth period? I thought they were all seventh and eighth, or eighth and ninth.
Leave after sixth. So, right when their lunch...
Lunch is over.
Right when their lunch would begin, they don't elect to go to lunch, they elect to leave. That's correct. Any other questions?
We happen to know, how many of those forty-eight that leave early are actual work? Do you know that? I don't know if there'd be a way to...
Yes, I do, thirty-four. And for the early arrivals, I actually have seven that queued in that they also work also.
They work in the morning?
They probably work in the afternoon, they just flex the schedule so that they can flex classes, so that they can come in and change when they're actually taking those classes. If they're working late shift, they may come in later than what they're typical. Just so you know, we sent surveys out to parents, they listed benefits, both students and parents were surveyed. Some of the benefits were basically more time in the day, more time to work, getting schoolwork done before practice and rehearsals, actually eating breakfast, more time to study and be prepared for the day, and getting a full night's sleep. Some of the late releases listed going to work, straight to work, so that they can get their schoolwork done in a reasonable hour, time to work and making more money, not just taking unnecessary classes to fill the day. Some students listed actually going to the gym to regenerate themselves. Some said that they use the time to use, to do for online credit recovery for work that they may have missed at the first semester. Some feel that they don't, aren't rushed, feel better prepared for school and practices. Some say that they don't miss as much school because they can schedule doctors and dentist appointments during that particular time. And most of them said that they had very minimal conflicts taking classes or taking anything during the school day that they wanted to have scheduled, and that they weren't missing any key year core courses that they wanted to have taken.
And the one thing I just wanted to add, that Mr. Laiton, Mr. Solich, and I last year promised that if students didn't meet the requirements of the senior privilege, that that would be pulled from them. And so, every time I've gone over truancy and attendance issues this year, I pass the senior list on to them, and they have revoked senior privilege on students who haven't met the requirements.
And in terms of discipline this year, to compare senior discipline from last year to this year, last year for my senior class, I had thirty-eight suspendable incidents by the end of the year. That would probably include hundreds of suspension days in terms of discipline. This year, at this point, by February 4th, we were at six in the senior class. So, that actually has impacted that.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Is there a required, like, GPA for...
It's all in the student...
Yeah, I don't have the handbook, I just have the data.
I can get it, or copy it if you guys would like me to.
I'm just curious.
So, you're not sure whether it's, like, above or below?
I mean, it's everything that was approved in the handbook last year, it's right over in the office, I can get a copy of it.
That includes attendance, GPA requirements, we do hold...
There were discipline requirements, attendance requirements, and I'm assuming academic, I didn't, I dealt with the little ones, I didn't pay as much attention, sorry.
Did we find out before the end of the week?
Yeah, I'll just go right down to...
I'd like to know if there was an academic requirement, I don't remember that either. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, Mr. Hewitt.
Good evening. Beginning of the calendar year targeted at about 200 kids, fifteen each grade level, who, between myself and some data we had, and the teachers, there are about fifty per grade that we thought could benefit from after-school tutoring. So, set that up with the teachers, sent permission slips home, and got a good response considering parents have to transport home from both Hartman and Perry. So, we have about 100 kids in tutoring during any given week. Again, it's three through six, it's math and reading, it's every other day. And every time I walk by the one of those rooms after school, there are a handful of kids, probably fifteen to twenty kids in the room at a time at any grade level, and they seem to be doing work, and they don't seem to be too miserable. You know, extra work after school can feel a little rough on some kids, but they seem like they're, they're doing okay. And that's, and that's really important, because I don't want it to feel like a punishment to them, and I don't think it does.
Frank, I have a question on that.
Shoot.
Do you have teachers doing that?
Yes.
May I have that?
Yes.
Because the mentor program in the high school setting would be a wonderful thing for the older kids to go with the, you know, and assist it. We do that at Grove City, at our district, we have the teachers, but then, we have our high school mentoring program come in and help as well, and it's just a great thing to put on your resume, you get extra help, more kids can be attended to. Have you guys ever thought of that?
Honestly, this is the first time we've done this program in a couple of years.
Oh, okay.
So, we're just kinda breathing life back into it.
That's wonderful. Thanks for the suggestion. And I know that the people that are in the mentor program, like, including my two sons, they love helping, so I'm sure they'd love to go to Hartman or Perry too, especially if they drive, and look excellent on their resume and help out the teacher, I'm sure.
We, between myself, sixth grade teachers, Mrs. Gelati, Ms. Wish, we got together and we formulated the sixth grade schedules, sent those home early last week. Those are due back Wednesday of this week, and we will forward those to Mr. Laiton by the following Wednesday, and we'll get the kids ready to go from sixth grade to seventh grade, because there are less than eighty days of school left.
That is so sad.
Down at Hartman, we had the snowball dance last Saturday. Over 150 kids attended, the PTO did a great job organizing it and chaperoning it and scheduling all the things. I would say it went off without a hitch. Really good things happened, the kids had a great time. It was, it was a really good event. I am very glad that we started doing that. Some good news, we got a $25,000 Safe Schools Equipment Grant. With that, it is gonna be for both Perry and Hartman. We are buying, as you can imagine, some safety equipment for in the schools, including panic buttons and strobes, and in the case of some sort of emergency, then there's gonna be more communication, more avenues to communicate that we actually have that emergency. So, that's, that's something that's gonna be really good for both of those schools. We just talked to Vector Security earlier in the week, or maybe late last week, almost attractive time, and we hope to have that installed by the end of June this year, operational by the beginning of next school year. We also received the Life Skills Grant, we received that once about three years ago, and we received it again, it's for grades six through eight, and it, it involves curriculum and training for kids, and it's, it's a really good program. I really like the things that Mr. Morela and Mr. Mazzanelli are doing with our sixth graders, and it's trickling its way up here to the high school. There'll be a little more details in my accommodations on Thursday, but I think that's, that's a really nice thing that we're doing. Sixth grade lunch, we're trying to get these, these young folks ready for the high school and hold them accountable. We very much structure their day. So, every day at lunch, they sit at the same seat, they've been doing that since kindergarten, the same table, and they have very little choice. Well, at the turn of semester, sixth graders had the opportunity on Friday to have Free Seat Friday. So, after they get their lunch, they walk out of the cafeteria with their food, and they get to sit wherever they want. And as long as behavior continues to be fine, then that privilege will remain intact, and they are very excited about that. So, I'm optimistic that they're going to do all the right things to keep that intact. Finally, I really wanna thank the PTO, they generously donated and wrote me the check and handed to me last week, a $5,000 check earmarked for Chromebooks for Hartman. They did the same thing last year, and Mr. New Power, in fact, donated some money for, to help pay for one of the carts. Last year, we took that money, we took a little bit of funding from the district, we ended up buying two Chromebook carts, and we loaded them with computers. I am looking to try to do the same thing this year. Not that we have extra money in the budget, but we have money that I have not spent in some of my accounts. I'm looking to reallocate some of that funding, push some of those purchases back until the beginning of next school year, get two more Chromebooks for Hartman. That way, we're getting closer to getting on an even keel with Perry, getting that, that sort of one Chromebook cart shared between every two teachers feel, which is really where we need to be to be successful with the way that we're differentiating the instruction. So, at some point, I'm hoping that the board can give me and/or Mr. Mancini some direction as to whether that they think it's okay if we do as we did last year. And again, this is not going to cause a budgetary shortfall. I plan to work with Mr. Zaron, reallocate funds that are already earmarked, but push those purchases back so that we can take care of this, because I wanna, to be honest with you, I wanna strike while the iron's hot. I really appreciate that, that contribution, and it's, it's really important to me, and it's really important to our kids. So, I just really appreciate what the PTO's done for that. Does anybody have any questions for me?
Okay, does any of that $25,000 grant that's targeted schools, does, can any of that go towards, like, a retaining wall at Perry?
We've already written in the equipment that we're, we're asking for, and that's what's been approved, so the simple answer's no.
All right.
About the same thing, parts and questions.
Thank you.
Good evening. Good news, the last count on, for kindergarten registration is 86 kindergarten students. We are not doing kindergarten registration until April 5th, 6th, and 7th, so we already have 86 kids registered for kindergarten, that's really exciting. This year, 2015-16, we're gonna do a federal program, bought it, and I completed that last year, it went very, very well, and unfortunately, we have to do it again this year, but no worries, I'm sure we'll do very well again. Our teachers at Northside celebrated the 100th Day of School last week, and the children had many, many exciting reading and math opportunities to work with the number 100. Our kindergarten students were reading 100 words to their second grade friends side by side, so that was real nice to see. I tweeted that out, so you can see that on the Northside link of our webpage. PTO also very graciously gave Northside a large check to purchase Chromebooks and a cart for Northside. We are, we purchased ten for each classroom for first and second, so we're nowhere near that Perry one-on-one, but we're, we're getting closer. Mr. Scotus is now coming into our first and second grade classrooms and doing some work. He had only taught second graders, so we added first grade this year, so that's a great addition to our technology instruction. With the purchase of that Chromebook and carts, we'll now be able to not have six and seven-year-olds carrying Chromebooks from one room to another and gathering them up so that a classroom can have a full set. So, that's really exciting, big huge thanks to PTO for that. Hybrid learning is going very, very well. We have a wonderful teacher that comes into our school and is coaching our first and second grade teachers, and they now have taken the Common Force standards and aligned those through Education City that actually matches what's going on in the classroom. So, their direct instruction is teaching, say, main idea or inferencing a problem solution. Now, when they're using the technology, it's going to cover those exact same standards. So, the teachers took about a half-day, they all worked together and created standard-based lessons using technology, and they finished it for this whole year. So, we have a really nice, standard-based curriculum using technology for the whole year. We also have an after-school tutoring program at Northside for K-1 and 2. It started early in the fall, I think September or October. We do have a high school student that comes over and helps us with that, and we also have an AmeriCorps service member who provides that instruction. She is a certified teacher, but she work, she doesn't work for our school district, she works, or she volunteers through the AmeriCorps program. So, she's a service member, she has to get about 41 hours per week, and she's also going to provide some tutoring in the summer, which is really nice, and I'd love to have some talents, some high school talent for that. In March, we have some exciting things coming up. Not only do we have hybrid coaching, but we also have a, a reading expert that is coming in and coaching our kindergarten teachers, and then we have a technology coach that's coming in and coaching our first and second grade teachers. So, we have a lot of professional development going on at Northside. All of that, all of you that know anything about education know that there is nothing that makes a bigger impact on a child's learning experience than their teacher. Their teacher is their number one biggest influence. So, to make our teachers the best they can possibly be, they're already excellent, but they're still growing, and I'm very, very proud to say that I am the structural leader at Northside. There's lots of good instruction going on there, not only for kids, but for teachers. We have kindergarten physicals coming up, so we'll be sending some paper home, paperwork home about that in March. Read Across America is celebrated on March 2nd, and that Friday, our kindergarten, or our parents are gonna come in, Northside parents are going to come in and do, read some books with the children, and also do a literacy-based activity with them. So, it's gonna be lots of fun, driven by our parents. We continue to have a lot of parent volunteers at Northside, very proud of that. I think it makes the children super excited about coming to school, and it's a great way to not only respond to our parents, but give them, actually engage them in the learning process, and that's very important at Northside. I think it gets the kids off to a great start, and that has gone very well for us. And we're also having green eggs and ham on Read Across America Days, which is March 2nd. So, if the kids come home and say they had, their eggs were a little green, they were supposed to be green. That's all I have, any questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
86 kindergarten students, is that typical for this point in the year, or do you...
It's more than typically have this time, because we're not registering until April, so we still have a long, we haven't, don't believe, there are some, some of our preschools that we haven't even given them the registration information yet. So, we're doing one school at a time, so they haven't all received it yet. So, 86 is good for this time of year. That's a great question. I'm hoping, I'd really like to see 150, but I don't know that we have that many. Any other questions? Thank you.
Leslie, special light.
Okay. Currently have two students who have qualified for National Academic Games in Atlanta, Georgia. That's April 22nd through the 20th... Georgia. That's April 22nd through the 25th. Both of those students attended the Academic Games last year in Florida. So they're real excited they get to go to Atlanta this year. We have three other students who have won undefeated. They need a second undefeated in order to qualify for Nationals. And they have tribal tomorrow. So they're really hopeful that they'll they'll get that second undefeated. We had transition meetings for our graduating special education students, just to make sure that all of their adult agencies are in place. MIU4, Office of Vocational Rehabilitation, our guidance counselors, our special education teachers, myself, the parents, the students, all get together. We sit down and make sure that all of the services are in place to ensure those students are ready to graduate and have everything they need to go on to any type of post-secondary school for employment. And right now, all of our students are employed. So that's really great in this as well. I want to thank Project Hope along with our Hartman and Lincoln Special Education teachers for donating to the Weatherby family. John Weatherby is our transition coordinator from the MIU4. He comes in and this year, we're under indicator 13 trading. So that's transition. That's making sure our students who are 14 or older are, we're preparing them for school, work, and/or their life skills. His daughter has been diagnosed with cancer and she is a senior at Nishanik. And the teachers came to me along with Mrs. Atkinson and they gave a donation to the family because she's going through quite extensive chemotherapy. So I just, that was just very kind of all of them to do that. We are getting ready for KSA testing. We currently have 19 students across this district who take the Alternative State Assessment. That is more than we have ever had. Those assessments are done both in reading and in math. Will also be done in science for our fourth, eighth, and 11th graders. So whether you have an intellectual disability or not, the state still says you have to be tested. And that testing is videotaped and then sent into the state for scoring. So we do have 19 students who will be tested currently. As far as early intervention, we have 14 students currently on our list to have meetings this month to start planning for testing and school-to-age services. So we're starting to prepare for that.
Is that in, that came to 12?
No, those are our preschool kids coming into kindergarten.
And there are 14?
Mm-hmm.
That's low.
Oh, that is.
Just so that you know.
I didn't think that.
Just throwing that out there. We've had up to 25. So that is, that's a fairly little number for us this year. Glad you clarified that. Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions for me? Thank you.
I know Mr. Schuster's here. Anybody has any questions for Mr. Schuster?
If not, I'm leaving.
Well, the, the, I think the issue that we were, you were going to be discussing with the board was the issue with gates.
Okay. Well, I mean, we followed up with what I was requested to do. We brought in the fire department, the chief and one of his fellow workers, and they, they went through the school and they determined that we cannot lock those gates. So.
Which gates?
We have, we have two portable gates that we put up about two years ago. The school's never had gates where we put these gates. The custodians were worried about people traveling all through the halls. So we put the gates up hoping to keep some of the transportation down. My personal opinion is now that we've put them up, I think we ought to take them down. We have a lot of things going on. This, this school seems to be getting more and more involved in different activities at night. And there's two bathrooms on that area over there that that you can't get to when the gates are up. Okay? Which, which means if the gym's being used, the small gym, that's being used, everybody's using the small gym has to walk all the way down here. Go ahead.
The restroom in the small gym that's.
It's in the locker room.
No, the one when you go down the ramp on the, on the right before you even go.
The handicap one.
Yes. Why can't they use that bathroom?
Well, they, they could. That would be a, both a male and a female bathroom then.
Well, yeah, you only have one person using it at a time.
Right. Yeah. Well, in, in a case where there's a basketball game and, and kids are playing, there's a lot of adults there watching their children play, you know, with other siblings.
We're talking about practice.
What's that?
We're talking about practice.
Oh, practice. You know, I, I don't care if the kids walk down here, you know. I'm, I'm talking about when there's adults in this building that need to use a bathroom. I think the gates should be left open for those adults. There's, there's a lot of grandmothers that, that go to these festivities.
Oh, right.
That, that have to walk all the way down here to go to the bathroom because these gates are up and they can't use these bathrooms.
But there's only, nobody, I mean, I don't think there's ever been a real line to go to the bathroom. You wait your turn like you do anywhere.
Well, it's just the availability of it. That's all.
Right. But there is some available right there. I, I, I just have a problem with the gates being open and people being able to go wherever they want to go in the school.
Yeah. And, and number one, they, they can't go wherever they want to go. Only goes the first floor. Okay? They can't get to the second floor or the third floor. They can get into the stairwell, but they can't get out onto the school property, school hallways. Okay? And once they get that into the stairwells with the fire doors, the fire doors are locked. So once they get into the fire, the stairwells, their only option now is to go outside. That's their only option. They have to go outside and reenter from somewhere else. They can't get into the hallways on the second and third floor.
But the basement in the first floor, they can still access.
No, they can't get to the basement.
Can't get into the basement either?
No. No, just the first floor.
Basement door.
And that's where most of the lockers are. And a lot of these kids that are in these practice sessions and stuff, they leave their books and their coats in their locker room. I mean, in their lockers. And then after the practice is over, they want to go get their books in their lockers and, and there's nobody there to go get them for them.
That's their responsibility.
Yeah, that's a responsibility.
I understand that. But most of these kids that are doing that are seventh graders. You know, and it's like, I don't care if we lock the gates or not, you know. I'm just saying, it's, we never had a problem until we put the gates up. Now all of a sudden, we got all these problems. You know, let's take them down. You know? That's just my opinion. That's your call.
Well, what's the purpose of putting the gates up in the first place? And ask, like, what?
The custodians were concerned about strangers blocking the halls that weren't supposed to be there, I guess would be a good way to put it.
Is there cameras?
Yes, yes. Yes. And there's really not that much activity on the first floor. I, I don't see any reason for them. But that's just my opinion. I, I, I think the people that are in the halls should have the access to the halls, the first floor. They can't get to the second or third floor. You know?
Are the classrooms locked too? So the teachers?
The classrooms are locked. They're only unlocked when the custodian is in there cleaning.
So technically, it's just the hallway and the bathroom?
The hallway, the lockers, and the bathrooms. And just that area. That's why I don't think it's that big a deal, but.
We'll have to discuss that.
Have there been problems before?
No. No, there's never been any problems.
They weren't put in.
The problems, the problems that we have, problems that we have is whenever there's a child that wants a book out of the locker room and they can't get that book out of that locker because the gates are up and the custodian's cleared the other end of the hallway and they're yelling to the custodian and custodian's not hearing. So then they have to walk all the way down here to get the custodian's working down here, walk all the way back up there again to get the book.
We're, we're going to hold off questions for the end, again, for visitors, okay, so that we can expedite the meeting or we're going to be here all night. Okay. So we, should I ask the board if they have any questions? Because they're going to have a chance to respond to just to what the information was that was given to us.
Which?
Which Steve gave us.
Oh, okay.
Board members, does anybody have any questions for Steve before we move on? Any other questions? We can discuss the rest later. Okay. All right. Is that the rest?
I must be wanted. She gave me the.
Oh, yes. The, I didn't get a chance to read it because I was listening.
It's the very first one.
Under requirements?
Definitions here.
Passing grade in all subjects.
Yep.
So passing means C or D?
D.
D. D is considered passing? Okay.
Credits. It's about credits. They're on, they're on course to graduate with their credits.
Anybody have any other questions about the senior privilege and the, the grading or anything else on the page? If not, we're going to go ahead and move on.
Can we get to regular finance first? It's the kind of three items.
Yep.
We'll have our regular monthly reports for January presented on Thursday evening. And then I'd kind of wish that the board could just take a look at number two, read through it. And then if you had a question, I would be happy to answer it. If not, we can just kind of have that on the agenda as a tax refund request that I would recommend that the board deny. Okay. And then the third item, we have a causatory tax sale. These properties have been through the upset tax sale, the judicial tax sale. So they're being sold clear and free of tax. But the advantage of the district is, is that it gets it back onto our active tax rolls. Are there any questions on those three items? If not, we have John Rully from Philip Weiner and Company here. He completed with his team the audit of the 14, 15 records in September and October. So he's going to go ahead and present the audit that is at your spot at this point. John, if you're comfortable, you can come up to the front of the table here or whatever, whatever works for you.
I can do that. Again, my name's John Rully. I'm the, I was the senior on the job. We had our staff down here for about three weeks going over the various accounts of the district. And I'm going to take you through, again, this particular report is some 67 pages. So believe me, I will not do every page, but I will give you the highlights, what in my opinion are. And I will make myself available if you do have questions, maybe not after the meeting, or if you would want me to come back for your regular meeting. If there's a question arising that can't be answered here or whatever, you know, I am willing to come back.
Thank you.
On pages three and four and five, this is our opinion statement. And it tells, it's, it's been set up to say what management's responsibility is, administration, the board, and then what our responsibilities are in regards to this statement. And again, it's a lengthy letter. The bottom line is that we gave you an unqualified opinion. It's what's called a clean opinion. Find any errors that were non-compliant or financially a problem. Okay? So it's a clean opinion. The next page is, is a part of your report that is prepared by the administration. It's called the Management Discussion and Analysis. And what they do, again, Mr. Zaron and Mr. Mancini get together and take the records and they also explain, it's like a letter. Made an assembly. It's the same as a, if you own any stock, the letter from the CEO for their shareholders' report. Again, there's, again, it's sort of capitalized information that I'm going to speak to, that they've gone over. And then they are also in there, you'll see a forecast looking ahead for the district's finances. And because unfortunately, as you know, finances are, I don't care how many times you graduate kids with honors or, or get them through graduation. A lot of times, everybody says, well, how do we do? What's the bottom line? And that's basically what our audit tells. I want to point one other thing out to you after you get through those 12, 13 pages of information, which is not ours, but we incorporated into the, it's basically the administration's. On 1718, this is a schedule, this was put in a few years ago. This is for basically bonding and financing. And they have been, they, what I mean, the governing, the people that govern us are saying to better present a financial statement, not necessarily what PDE wants, but what is wanted by the finance peoples. And it's, it's been incremental. A few years back, we had to put all the assets on, the capital assets, the land, building. And then one, next step, the next step was put on the debt. When we, when I get to the PD-type statement or your operating statement, you see it's pay as you go. This is what they call a full, cruel system. The biggest change this year is the Pennsylvania School Retirement Unfunded Pension Liability showed up. And if you look on page 18, you'll see a net pension liability of some 35 million. Now, remember, your part, this is a employer cost share plan with about 500 and some other school districts, the IUs. And it's based on, the total unfunded liability in the state of Pennsylvania is about $40 billion. But your share of this is 35 million. Now, you don't have to pay that tonight. So don't worry, I won't be passing the pink cup or anything like that. It's something that the powers that we have wanted to expose to the public of where the state is. And remember, again, this board doesn't have a lot of control over that because it's coming from the legislators who set up the plan. The board that runs PSER sets up the contribution rate. They say, here it is, pay it. So it's sort of a, it's one-year net position from a positive last year. And there's a note, if you look in the back, and I'll get to that real briefly, that shows how that went from a positive 13 million to negative 21 million dollars from positive equity deficit. And there's words, this terminology even drives me crazy. Remember, this is based on a two-year-old study. This is, this, it's not actuary on, on 15. It's based on 14. So they do all these actuarially studies. They base the investment income at seven and a half percent, whether you get that, you know yourself. If you have any money in the bank, you're lucky to get 1%, let alone seven and a half. And they have different terminologies in here like the portion share of collective deferred outflow of resources. And that's something that's in between. Again, that's an actuarially statement that they have done. They also, we, we show in here the district's pension contribution for 14, 15 as a asset. It's like a prepaid expense. It will come into play next year, again, when they do this actuarially study. So I just, again, I know it's a complex issue, even as I went through it to understand it. And it's, again, it's in there, and what the accounting world is trying to do in the government is disclose the debt and the future spending. And again, this work can't, nothing you can do except maybe contact your legislators to try to either get the subsidies up. And I'll show you how, on one of the pages, how this is going to affect you down the, down the road. Now, you've got to remember also, the state contributes at least 50% of this contribution. But if this particular contribution goes up, that means it's got to be made up locally. So, you know, it's a, it's a, it's a concern to you down the road. On pages 19 and 20, again, this is set up as a business. Remember, you're not, you are a business. Your, your job is to educate. You're a service business. And what we, what this reflects is, it reflects the cafeteria fund under the business type activity. And then the government activity includes the education process and the, oh, I would say, for example, in Mr., I, I talked to your maintenance manager and when we were talking about the chiller and the, and some of the improvements that they've done that are capital items. Again, that is shown as an operating expense, PDE, but for statement purposes, those have to be depreciated. If we go to page 21, this is what PDE, this is what they are interested in. They being the Department of Education. And again, as you can see, if you look under the first column, which is the general fund, that's your operating fund. We have a, at the end of June 30, you had a healthy fund balance of almost $6 million. Now, I understand in a lot of districts, because of the state not releasing tuition or subsidy money, the district here was able to weather that program without having to go borrow and pick up an additional expense of the district. So that's a positive thing, having a positive fund balance. Under the Capital Project Fund, basically that money is set up in, Mr. Schuster had a, the chiller project going on. It was, this started when we were finishing up here in June. It was completed in the next year. It is done, isn't it? Okay. And the Debt Service Fund, basically this reflects, it's all zeros. What happens is the money is transferred from the general fund, which is an expense in the general fund, and then paid out to the various bond issues. And you have a capital lease on an old boiler. It's not an old boiler, the boiler that was put into this particular school a number of years ago. On page 22, just to give you an idea, we're reconciling fund balances. Well, how did we get from a $6 million fund balance in the governmental funds to 21 million in the upper? And, and basically what it is, it's the capital assets, how they are shown. They're not shown on state. And basically what it is, it's the capital assets, how they are shown, they're not shown on the statement I just went over. We have deferred inflows and outflows of resources, which are basically accounts payable done in the future and prepaid expenses. And your long-term liabilities, like your bonds payable, and so on, right down through the unfunded pension liability. The operating statement is shown on twenty-three. And again, the operating fund, of course, is the general fund. And as you see, you had some twenty-six million dollars that went through the general fund. About thirty-seven percent of that is local money, that's your real estate taxes, wage taxes, property transfer taxes. And then the state forces, which are the basic instructional subsidies, special ed, et cetera, right down the line, is, makes up sixty-three percent. So as you know, you are fairly reliant on the state of Pennsylvania for your funding. Again, the expenses and what happened here, the net change in fund balance is a positive one-hundred-eighty-six thousand dollars. So the school district operated in a positive nature for the year ended June thirtieth, two thousand and fifteen. The capital project fund went down by the completion of the masonry work, the roof here, and a portion of the other expenses that were paid, capital items that went through the board here. As you can see, the debt service, we transferred four million one, there was a small fund balance of four thousand dollars, and the debt service was some four million five hundred thousand. Your overall debt position, as we look at a lot of bonds and that, which I will speak to here when we get to that schedule, is very, very, it's less than, I can't even tell you what it is, it's less than, off the top of my head.
Eighteen thousand, right now.
I'll tell you too. It's about two million one hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars is the bond issue. The ones, and they will be paid off, some as quick, or a little bit more than, as quick as two thousand and twenty-two. So they are very tangible. One of the problems there is, the plank-on projects, where you would get a subsidy right now, don't have any money, doesn't, doesn't have any money. And so that's something that, you know, when you do, maybe look, if you're looking at a large capital expenditure, basically, your buildings are in pretty decent shape, although Steve could speak to that a little bit better than I can. The next page, we speak to the cafeteria fund, or no, on twenty-four, it's just, again, a reconciliation of how we had a net change balance of four hundred and sixty-eight thousand, which included the, which included the capital reserve fund and the general fund, and how that affected, for example, one of them is, for the PDA statement, the district poured a hundred thousand dollars for the new telephone system. That's income to the PDE, but yet, when you capitalize that and show it as a debt, that's one of your major differences. The next page is the balance sheet for the cafeteria fund. It shows a positive balance in the net position of fifty-two thousand at year-end. But if we look at the next statement, as one of the people spoke to it, your food revenue was some two hundred and eighty-nine thousand. The state sources were another five hundred thousand, between the federal and state sources. Your operating expenses were about nine hundred and ninety-eight thousand. And the general fund supported the cafeteria to tune up a hundred and ninety-seven thousand. In reviewing that, again, I had kids that were unfortunately raised on McDonald's and things like that. It's been hard for me to, because Dad doesn't eat all the vegetables and all the, it's been hard to retrain them, and that's one of the problems, I think. I know they looked at the menus and things when I was over in the cafeteria, because I do look at the compliance and things that they do there. Again, I'm not a nutritionist, and maybe Rich, I don't know, did you mention to him about the food service audit that you had? Were they?
Well, we did have a food service audit, and we actually came out of it pretty well. They made some technical suggestions on how to improve things. But, I mean, a lot of what they did was they wanted to look at menus. We had to submit a month's worth of menus for them to analyze. And then they'd come back and tell us what changes we would have to make to that menu to meet some of the requirements. So, I mean, whatever came of that audit, we were able to respond to.
Positive factor.
Positive factor, and then the state has accepted it and signed up.
Well, again, they're talking about sodium levels, they're talking about fat levels. Over the years that I've done audits, as you well know, they used to give a lot of cheese, surplus cheese, a lot of ground meat, and that is, with more fat content, they are changing those things as they are trying to change the nutrition for the children today, so we don't become obese, obese, I guess. Those kind of things. Twenty-seven is just a cash flow statement, telling you the cash went up, and it went up by different various factors here. Again, nothing unusual. There is a balance in the cafeteria with some hundred and thirty-eight thousand. On twenty-eight, these are your fiduciary funds. The activity funds are those of the students. That's in the most column on the right-hand side, and again, that's due to the student groups. You have treasures, there's student treasures, they have to buy, they have to do warrants. It tries to teach the students how to handle money, how to make deposits, those things and that. It's brought down to the business office, recounted and deposited. The trust funds, basically, those are, Mr. Bodinsky had left the district some money that was used for scholarships. There also was a couple athletic-type funds that were set up from way back when, which were, that are used in for general athletics, embedded basic improvements to the school. It was set up over the years. And again, in this particular year, there was about thirty-seven hundred dollars' worth of scholarships awarded out of Mr. Bodinsky's. There were more at one time, but that's sort of shrunk down here. Improvements of the facilities were about eight thousand dollars out of those funds, which were not, basically, the school district funding, the monies that were earned in other ways and set up. And now, the next twenty pages, twenty-nine through fifty-four, and believe me, I won't go through them blind, so I won't control this. There are some pages I would like for you to, just take a look and see that I feel are important. Again, the money is, that's in the bank, it's through West Banko, they fully collateralize it. About the two-hundred-and-fifty thousand in total. Now, state law, than any other bank, if it would go over two-fifty, they gotta put bonds up for government documents, instruments to bond any money over to, so in case a bank would go south, that would be covered in the district, would lose no money. You also use a couple other ones, there's other vehicles, but again, interest is terrible this year. I mean, with this kind of money, you made about thirty thousand dollars, I mean, that's unheard of today. You know, yourself, you know what you're doing, it just, that used to make maybe a half a mill, a mill a tax that would help subsidize, you know, the general operation. That hasn't happened the last few years. On page forty-three is a schedule of your long-term debt. We, the district has eight million three hundred and five thousand dollars in general obligation bonds. There's some bond premiums that are amortized over the course of those bonds. We have some capital leases payable, which is the boiler that was put in that heats both this building and Hartman, and also the new telephone system. There's also compensated abstances, these are the things that are earned by the teachers with their vacation pay or various employees. The post-employment benefits are those health fees are done by contract. There are future payments that are due as people retire, it's done actuarially. And of course, the last number is the net pension liability, some thirty-five million. And so I was gonna point out one other thing to you. On page thirty-two, and I know I'm jumping around here, and I sort of apologize for that, but as you get a chance to read these and do have questions, please don't hesitate to call me. Mr. Zaron or whoever can answer it. On the second paragraph up, that was to these districts' contribution to the PSERs. And remember, that includes pension, and a portion of that is healthcare for the retirees. And it went from, in thirteen, from a one million three to two million three in two years. That's a million-dollar increase now. Granted, you do get some of that back from the state, about fifty percent, it could be a little bit more, depending upon the student aid ratio and some other calculations come into that. And if you turn over to the next page, on fifty-three, this is the new schedule that's come out for what the funding contribution by school. And as you can see, back in two thousand and four, it was only three-point-seven-seven percent. By the time we get to two thousand and twenty-five, it's gonna be thirty-two percent. And that's up the cover payable. So you, again, the legislators and that who fund this through the state or whatever, I don't know where they're gonna find the money, but part of this is gonna, you know, trail down to the school districts too, to your share of this. So, you know, something down the road that's coming. Basically, that gets me through all my fifty, fifty-four, which ends it. On fifty-five and fifty-six, we speak to the compliance and internal control. When we're down here, we look at things like that, how's it done? How's, is it dual signature, what, go through the purchase process? How it goes through the buildings, comes to Mr. Zaron. I heard Mr. Kate or whomever talk about who was gonna meet with Mr. Zaron and see if he could move some money around. There seems to be good communication, proper through the area, of how the money's spent, how it's approved, and then through the board process to bills that are presented to the district. What we started to next are, like on page fifty-eight, these are some, this is some schedule that show the budgeted amounts, how it was originally set up, how they were finalized, how maybe money was moved around to meet certain, whether there was excess money or something wasn't met. And again, what that works through is down to the one-hundred-and-eighty-six thousand dollar surplus. Again, it just breaks down, and then the ensuing pages have more detail. We wanna give the board, as you well know, you can see, what are the revenues from local sources? What are they? And if you turn on sixty-three, you'll see a long list of the current real estate, to the public utility tax, to the big real estate, to the earning income tax, to your local service tax. There's a whole myriad of different miscellaneous revenues. And then the state revenue is the same kind of things. And from the basic instructional subsidy down through, as you can see, the state shared retirement contribution was a million three, but you still pay two-hundred and, or two million three hundred thousand. So that means the district had to make up eight hundred thousand dollars for that contribution. And again, it's a contracted obligation, so, you know, again, I don't think, there's not too much leeway there. Again, sixty-four just gives you a breakdown of the budgets and that. Page sixty-five gives you a look at the cafeteria fund if you were a pro-proffer. And you can see, it's almost a mirror image of itself. If you look at fifteen and fourteen, total revenues are very, very close together, but the operating expenses went up somewhat, and that generated down to the local subsidy that was originally planned that ended up in a larger amount. I can say, we also give you, you have a myriad of clubs on page sixty-six. Again, these all have student treasures, they also have a supervisor that the district pays, cited to, I'm sure. And again, just to give you an idea of all the clubs that are here, some are active, some are start, there is a three-year rule, I think, that PDE wants the club becomes inactive, they want you to close that particular club and put the money into the student council. And normally, somebody comes along and reactivates that particular club. On sixty-seven is the last page, these are, just break down your fiduciary funds. Mr. Bodinsky, who gave you a fairly decent sum of money in bonds and things, which basically could never touch, gave some stock, it's Ford Motor Stock. They cannot, you cannot spend any of the corpus until it splits two more times. I don't know if that'll ever happen in our lifetime, but it's revocable trust. If you would break that, the money could go, the money is designated to go back to the United States government for debt reduction. I know, I, you know, but these are, that's why it's called a revocable trust. So again, Mr. Zaron's gotta be very careful of what he's doing, how to invest the money, because there are certain rules and stipulations, how to invest that money. And again, scholarships awarded out after some thirty-seven hundred, and out of the Helling Stadium Century Club, there were some improvements at the football field and also through the athletic facility fund. I've gone through this, I know, extremely fast. I'm criticized for talking too fast, and, but if you do have any questions, please, when you get a chance to look at this in depth, or if you would want me back on Thursday, I'd be more than happy, or, is that your next board meeting?
Yep.
Thursday, I would be more than happy to come back. With that, are there, are there any questions?
I don't have any, does anybody else have any questions?
At this time, anyway. But you can always call our office, I may not be in, but you know, I will get back to you.
Thank you very much.
I don't have any questions, but I'll make a comment, I suppose, that in light of what we're going to be seeing here in the next few years, I don't see, this is a hole that our state legislature has put us into. And I guess, from our perspective, what can we do to change that? I think we should start looking at consolidating our resources, talking to Riverside, Shenango about transportation, what we can do about buses that are going up and down the same road, they should be taking all of our kids. Some to Riverside, some to Elwood, I mean, I know other schools maybe around here don't wanna speak merger, but it's, this is what's going to happen, consolidating of everything is eventually what's going to happen. We shouldn't wait for the state to deem the schools financially distressed and come in and make us merge anyways. I think, see that we need to put pressure on our state representatives, hold them accountable for what they've done to the school districts here. And I, we, this is, asked to open up a discussion up here, what can we do to talk about this debt? Because it's not going away. I don't know if that's holding conversations with other school boards around in the area to talk about the resources that they have. It's just, something needs to be done. And that probably includes putting pressure on the state government to make those changes as well. So, maybe you can talk to Riverside about their bus matters, where they run students. And then eventually, I think, it's gonna have to come down to, because I know that local school districts don't wanna make that decision, and Elwood and Riverside might not wanna come together because of the politics between Elwood and Riverside, or the pride between Elwood and Riverside. But eventually, we need to have a vision, and we have, make a solution. If the government doesn't wanna do it for us, I think that we need to do it ourselves. So, I think it's something that we should all keep on our radar here as this debt is approaching.
Anybody else have any comments?
Okay, personnel and executive session items, personnel and executive session items. Athletics facilities and community, some facility requests, this is Pam McDonald, Dance Expression Studio, request use of the Lawrence, excuse me, Lincoln High School auditorium, small gym for rehearsal and recital on June eleventh, from, Saturday, June eleventh, from eight-thirty to one. And then Sunday, June twelfth, twelve, twelve P.M., doors opening at one o'clock. I would say Wolverine's Cheerleaders request permission to use Hartman School cafeteria for cheering tryouts Wednesday, March ninth through Friday, March eleventh, from six to eight P.M. Elwood City Art Club requests space in the old art room, the basement of Lincoln School to, like a high school, to hold classes in the evenings, on the fourth Saturday of the month, from ten to four. Willing to donate or pay some, you know, monthly use for that facility. American Cancer Society requests use the Helling Stadium football field, track, practice football field, press box, lights, restrooms, concession stands with water and electric on Friday, June tenth, from five to nine P.M. for setup on Saturday, June eleventh, at eight A.M. until midnight for the annual relay for life. And E.C. Boys Basketball Boosters request the Lincoln High School cafeteria to host our annual basketball banquet on Sunday, February twenty-eighth, from five P.M. to eight P.M.
Yes?
I just wanted to address the art club. In the letter they wrote, she put down that traditional art programs have been eliminated. Can somebody let her know that we still teach art?
I think we have.
And the bathroom issue, they have oil painting from Thursday from one to three, when our students are in school.
That's, that's what they do now, currently, so they know it's all gonna be in the evening. So, that's what they put, they get that letter and said what they currently teach and when. So, they know not to be in during school time.
So that's the plan right now? They're not gonna be in the building when the kids are in?
No, no.
Did you ask them about the bathroom situation?
Yeah, John took them on a tour and showed them, and they didn't say anything, right?
I guess the plight of the space that they're in at this time is so bad, they're really looking for any open doors. And really to work around, schedule-wise and facility-wise, whatever they have to do to secure better space for the program. Discuss the rate of what they could possibly spend. And pretty much, she was told if they go higher than that, they would have to disband what they have to offer at this point. So, just being upfront and honest with everybody, making sure everybody knows where they're at currently.
Okay, Mr. DeCaro, in the event that we enter a contract with them, for them, their use of the building, can they come back about the bathrooms not being handicapped accessible?
I would make that bathroom off limits to them, it's just not accessible, they have to use the first floor bathroom.
Okay.
Which I don't know, any more convenient form, but.
An extra point.
It's, at least stall-wise and all that, it's.
Well, that would be something, just like we used to have the, we used to have the, what's one they just used?
what's one they just used, the high charge on?
GED.
GED program, we used to have it down in the basement, and they used to use the, I think the custodians knew the classes were going on, so once they were finished, they would lock them back up for them, so, as long as the custodians know the schedule.
Unless you're not going to charge them.
That's, that's what I was going to say, I'd, I don't think, I really don't think an extra twelve hundred dollars a year from the Elwood City Art Club is going to line our pockets very well, and I also don't think it's the right thing to do to, for a club that's already financially distressed to charge them a hundred dollars per month and even enter into contract, I think it's a good thing to do for the community and for the arts program here, and Elwood, they said our students hopefully could be able to join their classes and use their classes, so, I would be opposed to charging them any great doll to use of the facility.
Do we think we're going to incur any kind of real expense having them in there?
Just custodial, I mean, if there's anything that needs cleaned up, I mean, I'm not sure if they clean up that they're going to do, and I don't think we'll really incur, you know, true expense.
I mean, if we can make it, you know, known that they need to clean up when they're finished, then I think that, I would be okay with that also, not charging them, I'm not sure how the rest of the board feels, but.
Education and Student Affairs Field Trip, Mr. Gavis has again asked permission to take government students to Philadelphia by train, visit the Pennsylvania Supreme Court and other historic landmarks, depart five-thirty A.M. on Tuesday, March eighth, return ten P.M. on Thursday, March tenth. Funding for the trip is being requested from Elwood City Businesses and Associations. District Policies, be revised zero-zero-five on the organization, and revised policy nine-sixteen on school volunteers, they've been on display since January. We also have a new policy, zero-one-one, Principles of Governance and Leadership, which will be on display until the March meeting, at time, at that time will be submitted for board consideration. Two thousand fifteen sixteen memorandum of understanding with the Midwestern Intermediate Unit Four provides district with special education services and programs, including hearing and vision support, fifteen sixteen school year, cost anticipated to be one hundred fourteen thousand seven hundred and sixty-four dollars, you can kind of read there what that's for as far as salary, fringe benefits, costs for staff, supervisory, administrative, travel, supplies, books, and equipment. Approximately fourteen students receive these services, final cost will be determined at the conclusion of the school year in conjunction with the IU audit, the memorandum will be submitted for board consideration at the regular meeting. Mr. Lape has proposed an addendum to the fifteen sixteen and sixteen seventeen Secondary Student Handbook regarding the change in graduation requirements, as you know, House Bill eight-eighty was signed by the governor, putting a two-year delay on Keystone exams as far as a graduation requirement, if you had a chance to read that, they want to, you know, Mr. Lape, the current sophomore class, who is taking biology and literature right now, wants to still make that a graduation requirement for the current sophomore class, and then any classes back behind that, the state is supposed to come up with a new plan within the next six months on Keystone exams and how they're going to incorporate that, so this is a temporary hold until that gets put into place. We still need the current sophomore class to take the test seriously, because it goes as, you know, part of the school evaluation, the teachers' evaluations, so if we were to say it's not required as a graduation requirement, students would not take it serious, so, we still have, you know, the current junior class is the one that's getting the break, so it's a class of, you know, the sophomores that, class two thousand eighteen would be the class that would be a local requirement for graduation.
We're not sure, though, if I understand this correctly, they could change the whole requirement completely, where they don't require this at all.
They put a two-year delay, and the state has six months to figure out what they're going to do, so, between now and then, though, your sophomores are going to be taken to Keystone's in biology and literature, so if we were to say right now that it's not a graduation requirement, that current sophomore class could just go and fill and see for every answer, and we would get affected by that because it's not a graduation requirement. So we're asking, what Mr. Lape was asking, that the current sophomore class makes, that it's a graduation requirement, but they pass the Keystone's, they've already taken the algebra, you know, because they're, now they're sophomores, they've usually taken algebra by ninth grade, now they're involved in biology and literature, and this change happened right now, before their Keystone's are coming up in May, the state's not going to have a plan by then, so, we are requiring that this current sophomore class that it be a graduation requirement, and most schools are doing that because that's the class that's in between the law, so.
So other schools in the area are doing the same thing?
Yeah, we've got the language right from other schools, you call them all the other principals, and so. Two thousand sixteen to nineteen Comprehensive Plan has been on display since January, it's a three-year educational plan, and our current plan will expire June thirtieth, two thousand sixteen, and the new plan begins on two thousand sixteen seventeen school year, and that will be on the agenda. Perry Hartman's Scheduling Proposal, Mr. Keely's seeking direction on his scheduling proposal for the sixteen seventeen school year, he is available to answer any questions, and that was sent back out, I believe, to all the board to look at.
I know, I know this came up last year, and we had talked about it, and we had decided to leave fifth and sixth grade the way they are, I don't know what the board's feelings are this year compared to last year when we were given the same opportunity, but I'm not sure if anybody has done any research on it, about the switching, the children's switching, all the teachers? No. I did some research over the last week, and, you know, there's a lot of talk about the departmentalization in the school districts, and how a lot of the schools are now moving towards that, and I think it's like twenty percent, if I, if I have my numbers right, that are doing the departmentalization, they range, from what I've learned, to where, you know, some schools are doing it, you know, five and six classrooms, like what he's talking, Mr. Keely is referring to, some do exactly what we're doing now, they see a lot of very good results with what we have in place now, where they're in, I don't know what, you can call them pods, I guess, because that's what we call them, so they are already somewhat departmentalized, whereas they're not in one class, with one teacher all day. There are a few things they say to be worried about when you departmentalize to the point where they have, you know, five and six teachers, there is a danger, is, I'm going to read this quote, "The danger of departmentalization is the creation of silos," says Catherine Boyle, senior lecturer at the Harvard Graduate School of Education, "We have to teach students to be critical thinkers across subject areas, and to think deeply about American history and the connection to literacy and science instead of isolating it and platooning." There was another quote in this particular article I'd like to read, it says, "In the hierarchy of priorities, keeping the kids together with one teacher is way up there." Comments Molly McCloskey, manager, director of the Whole Child Programs, the Association for Supervise, Supervision and Curriculum Development, "Focusing on relationships is way up there," she says, "The more we focus on that as a critical variable in every decision we make, the more we are thinking through the eyes of the children." And a lot of what I've read weren't about the dangers of the kids struggling with getting from class to class, the responsibility it is for each teacher, I just feel that things are working the way they are, and we have, our test scores are great at Hartman, and I know, I speak from experience, and only from my sons, fifth grade is great, sixth grade, he's having a great year, I'd like to see things stay the same in regards to the pods being two separate pods, so they are still departmentalized, but just not full. I'd like to hear anybody else's comments.
I have a child the same age, and I agree, I like the way it is now, I don't think they need to change more than three classes when they're ten years old, eleven years old, that's too much. This would be just a basic housekeeping sort of question at Hartman, if they were to change, fifth and sixth were to change to be at five teachers, fifth grade and sixth and sixth, how, and this is a question directly from my soon-to-be fifth grader, and I asked her how she felt, she said, "Five other kids sit at my desk, make my desk a mess, and I'll just get yelled at because my desk is a mess, and how am I supposed to carry all these books with me?" And I said, "I don't walk, I'm not out of order," so, just as, and that's from a practical perspective, you know, which, so, my question is, is that Hartman's not set up, they don't have lockers, you know, it's not like the high schools, how would they go about changing classes, per se, if they changed to five or six?
Well, they would travel in groups, and it would be a simultaneous thing, so they would go from one, one class to the next, the, the plan would be to get them to go not, not across the hallway so much, but kind of in a circle, and there would be four or five other kids sitting at their desks, most likely, but there's already, there's already three.
Right.
So it's not that many more.
But I'm, I am constantly replacing items that are being stolen out of both of my children's desks, I have two that switch classes, and I, it's like a constant issue, who's breaking this, who's stealing, like, and who's messing with this that they leave on their desk, like, Hartman, I agree with Jen, it's just not set up, they don't have a locker where they can securely keep their items. Would they, would they take all their books with them? That's what I mean, the teacher's not going to come to their classroom.
Correct.
They're moving to wherever they need to go.
So yeah, they would need to bring their materials to the next class.
So they have to carry like six books all day.
That's not necessarily true.
To learn, I mean, I like it the way it is.
Does anybody else have any comments, anything they'd like to bring up for discussion?
I think that, I mean, if our administrators feel that this is in the best interest of the district, I tend to lend my support to what their recommendation is.
But it's working, so why would you change it? You know what I mean, like, the test scores are great, there's positive feedback from the kids, they like it the way it is, I know I asked my sixth grader, she didn't like the idea of having more than the three teachers, I mean, that's just, you're creating more anxiety for these children, I don't, I can't see how.
One of the problems I'm going to have is we can't keep it the same unless we hire a teacher, because we have five teachers in fourth grade, and that's smaller classes coming through, so again, I don't have a problem with keeping it the same, but I can't without that other action.
But you could move a teacher.
Right, the plan is to move a fifth grade teacher to fourth grade, or some permutation therein, but then, because again, the small classes coming to fifth grade, going from fourth to fifth, so I got to replace one teacher, move it down, move that teacher down, so I'm down to five teachers, which is not currently the way we have it, so we can't keep status quo, which is kind of why I tried to do this two years ago, so we could figure out how and what we wanted to do when this came about.
But there's, there's not really an educational benefit for doing that, that's just more of a benefit for arranging the staff and getting who's teaching what, I mean, Mrs. Lombardo teaches all the kids writing, which is fifth grade, so she's going to have all the kids, no matter what, so she could just take on another subject and divide the other ones equally between the other two pods.
She can't take on another subject, she's already teaching, she would be teaching five sections of writing, if we had five teachers, she'd be teaching five sections of writing, there's, there's nowhere, there's no room in the end, I don't know how it would happen, I don't know how she could teach another subject.
She just have more time, because before there were four pods, four sections, there were the two, the two, the math, and the, and the reading, and then there was Mr. Philotico and Miss, Mrs. Lombardo, so there were four sections, she would.
Six.
Okay, six, granted, but they were what, ninety minutes for the, the math and the reading, and then smaller periods for Mrs. Lombardo and for Mr. Philotico.
Right.
Well, she would then gain that timeframe, so she would have more time to teach, so she could take on a new, another subject, because she's going to gain that time that, and I'm referencing last year or this year, with, what, the timeframe that Mr. Philotico has, that, that teacher would not be there, so she would gain that time, so therefore she'd have that time to teach another subject, whether it be spelling or however you would feel to divvy up, that time would be there for her to teach another subject.
Logistically, it does not work out, if I have a math teacher and a reading teacher in each pod, right now, the other two teachers teach science, social studies, and writing, in the middle, they switch.
So.
Okay, so, there is nowhere for that other group to go, if I want to dedicate less time to writing, I think that would significantly impact our achievement, so that means I'd only have, because I could get classes to about an hour if we had five sections, but then I would teach, let's say, science in fifteen minutes, and that, I don't want to do that either, that's not a good, because then we don't have extra time, the time is the same.
Right, so, the, the time is the same, so the teacher, you've just lost one teacher, and the other teacher is picking up that time.
So from what you're saying, if, if, at fifth grade, if you had five teachers at fifth grade, and you had one teacher out of the five who was doing writing for all five, what you're saying is the other four teachers who are left, if you had two and two, they couldn't equitably teach the remaining subjects with just them, correct?
Correct.
Well, they, but the time is still the same, so that extra time has to be being divvied up either between the math and the reading, or with the, with the writing, I mean, the time in the day hasn't changed, so if you're, if you're removing a teacher, there's still that extra time there, I mean, clearly, there's extra time that they have to take on the extra subjects, because Mr. Phil, in this case, Mr. Philotico would not be there, so the time that those kids were in that class.
I'm not going to say Mr. Philotico's not going to be there.
Well, I'm, I'm just, I'm using that just because.
I have not made that decision.
I'm, I'm saying that because Mrs. Lombardo is the reading teacher, and the math and English he did not teach, that's the only reason I'm using that as reference, but that slot that he has for science and social studies is still going to be open, so they can be, that time can be split, whoever is going to be teaching those classes.
Or, let's say that's true, then, if she's going to teach a ninety-minute section, she can only teach three of those, but there's five to teach, and there's only three ninety-minute blocks in a day.
Well, if you want her just to teach the one subject, then you just give that extra time to the other two pods.
You can't, because all the, all the kids have to be in the rooms for the same amount of time, you can't just give extra time to one room, because if I give extra, if I give fifteen extra minutes to one teacher, I have to give those fifteen extra minutes five times to the one teacher, but then the fifteen minutes go to everyone else, too, it does not work out.
How many students are in fifth grade?
Next year, there'll be about a hundred twenty.
Would it be possible, I, it would be possible, you might not want to hear this, but, put them all into, like, one teacher a piece, like, just.
The back to traditional, right.
Anything's possible, it's not my recommendation, but I'll do whatever I'm directed to do. But that's on the heels of saying nothing's broken there.
Right.
Well, I, I can only speak to what my experience has been, and I can say the fifth grade was awesome, it was absolutely awesome, those teachers are great, they're fantastic, I know things can't stay the same unless we're willing to hire a teacher, so I'll throw that out there. So, I'll throw that out there. Would anybody like to discuss hiring a teacher?
I have a question, too. Like, third grade, you have one that has like 12 students and then you have like 26, 23. And then like my daughter's in fourth grade. One of her, well, one of her classes, she's in with 28, Jen's kid's in with 29. But then there's another class there with, what, 13 or something? And fifth, are you going to have them all spread out equally where there's like 22, 23? Like, there's not gonna be one that has 10 in it and then the other ones are...
Right, I don't have the tier-two classroom in grades five and six. That's really for reading intervention to catch kids up. Having a kid be able to read and comprehend, really by the end of the third grade, is essential to their learning. Stretch it to fourth grade. By fifth grade, it's time, so I don't do that.
Okay.
What I do do is, 119 divided by five is about 24. I would probably have two sections that have a little less, probably 22. And the other four sections would have one more apiece, so 25.
Okay.
And I think that's what I wrote in some capacity on a sheet, a document that I sent out. And that, that's general procedure based upon other things.
Thank you.
Kathy, while you, I'm sorry, Ms. Panzera, while you were out, we were discussing the change in classrooms. And it was brought up about hiring another teacher for fifth grade. Just, I'm throwing it out there and I just know that you missed it. So, I wanted you to be aware that it was something that was brought up. If anybody's wanting to discuss hiring a teacher and solving that problem in that capacity or, you know...
I'm personally not for it, looking at the audit. And the amount of...
That's a budget that we don't have.
That's a budget that we have.
I meant the audit. And the amount going to benefits.
Right. Okay.
And again, if you have the average 23, 24 students in a class, I think that's quite manageable.
Yeah.
Yeah, right.
Coming from, you know, because we both have kids now that are in huge classes.
Hey, I'm not complaining about the class size. That's not, that's not a problem.
We, yeah, we, that's, I like the...
Disadvantage of having that.
Right, and that's why I'd like to see things stay as close to what it is like as it is now because I feel there is a great asset with having Mrs. Lombardo teach all of the children in fifth grade. I just think that Science and Social Studies can be split between the other ones. And the time, you're the schedule guru. Find a way to get that scheduled so that they all take on those classes, the extra classes and leave them. They would be in three pods then. They would see three different teachers, which is then a, an upgrade, you know. Fourth grade is gonna be two, then it'll be three in fifth grade, and then three in sixth grade, which I think is, it's been wonderful. Like I said, our experience in fifth and sixth grade, and that's all I can speak to, is in the past. Teachers are great. I hate to see that messed up. Any other questions for Mr. Keely? Because we will have to be...
Mr. Keely, as I understand...
You need to make a decision.
Well, isn't that Thursday or are we going to be deciding that tonight?
So, we're gonna have to put in a motion. I'm sorry, Mr. Cortez.
Mr. Keely, to make sure I understand and heard you correctly. Keep everything the same, we'd have to hire a teacher.
Absolutely.
So, the new schedule was not hiring a teacher, is that correct? What schedule you're proposing?
Yes, that was, to me, that was keeping it as close as I could. That was the closest solution to status quo. As I was directed by the board last year, status quo is what we wanted. This was my solution, to get as close to that as I could and, and try to make it as educationally sound as I could. That was the best I could do. If the desire of the board is for me to go in another direction, I'll make that happen.
I understand that, thank you. Just about make a comment that as we continue every year to go over the budget, man, it's real simple for someone to look and say, "Well, we just simply have to balance it." And I keep repeating over and over, "Understand, we can do that." If you wanna run the education system just strictly like a business, and the most important thing is balancing the bottom line, we can do that. Our administrators can come back with a plan to do that. But if you think you're going to do that without having detrimental effects on education, that's what I...